Like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one school committee meeting. In keeping with an act relevant to extending certain COVID nineteen measures. Adopting during the state of emergency signed into law. By Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions by the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address and we'll do our best to answer all the questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. And as this is a one item agenda. We will make sure that we're not voting until after we've had a chance to accept public com- questions. Okay. So let me just pull up the agenda. So item two is discussion and possible vote on a vaccine requirement for student trips. And this came up during our last school committee meeting in reference to a trip proposal to Puerto Rico. Where these students had been originally going to go two years ago and the trip was canceled. And the same group is trying to go. As these students are now seniors. And the trip proposed was from August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two to. April, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two to April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. And if everyone recalls, the question came up about vaccinations as this is an overnight trip. I certainly have some opinions and things to say, but I'm not sure if other people would like to start. If not, I can. Is there anybody know? Jen?
I think before we get started, it would be helpful to know what other trips are anticipated. That could be affected by this vote. And I would like to just get a sense for what types of trips and activities we think may be. Coming up. In addition to this.
Well, I think one part of this is distinguishing, do we want to distinguish between any overnight trip versus a day trip? And an overnight trip could be a sports overnight trip. Could be a music overnight trip, a robotics overnight trip. Or a foreign trip. But the concept of it being an overnight, dealing with hotels and unmasked children sleeping. In shared rooms. I mean, that's just one differential that we do and then it would just be a matter of the type of trip versus how many of them. That's just my opinion. I don't know if somebody else wants to. Address that question.
Just to answer the the first question, we are aware of one to Italy that's coming up. For approval. Perhaps April vacation as well, but we have, I don't have the paperwork on that yet. That's the only one that I'm aware of right now.
That's actually for two thousand twenty-three. And that would be a foreign trip, which would, those requirements are already in place for all foreign trips. Caroline?
It is true that foreign trips in general, those requirements are in place. My understanding though was that. The actual vaccine requirement was related to the requirement at the destination, wherever that might be. So of course, you know, Puerto Rico is a domestic location. But it does involve overnight, multiple overnights and. Obviously flying, which is. Well, the airplane's low risk, the airports are not. So I, my understanding is that that'll, you know, it's hopefully in twenty twenty-three, this won't be an issue. But it would be based on, in that case, Italy's requirement. So that would already be in place. I suspect that if we are beyond enough beyond the pandemic that. You know, certainly by twenty twenty-three that we can safely allow people not to have mandates. That will be the case, but I, it's just based on the destination is my understanding.
We don't have a policy officially that says that the school committee. Requires what the destination requires? We can have that?
That was the EF, that was their, their policy.
Right.
Right, wasn't our policy, but.
No, so but to Michelle's point, I think. I don't know if she was saying that the school committee has a policy because it doesn't cover, it doesn't necessarily cover every trip. It's going to depend on where it is and who the vendor is. So if you wanted that policy, that would be something that you would have to determine as a committee.
I wouldn't really, that would, that wouldn't be relevant here. I mean, it would be relevant, but it wouldn't be. In operation here because my understanding from the EF representative was that. Puerto Rico, because it's a domestic location, the destination does not require it, so. A little bit different situation.
It is, but to I, to the point about the Italy trip.
Oh, yeah.
Do, do we anticipate any other domestic trips? I think Dr. Cabral, you'd mentioned maybe DECA and.
It's possible, but we don't have them yet. I'm just going by past experience. DECA has in the past, as Michelle said, there have been, I mean, even. Rhode Island is considered out of state, so. You know, we definitely have had competitions, sporting events, sporting tournaments. It's definitely possible that this could come up for really any activity, not just. Extracurricular in terms of foreign travel. Or domestic travel. The Washington DC trip. Would fall under this for domestic travel. Again, we don't have requests for these things just yet, but. It certainly would. Impact a lot of potential upcoming things, so just. Those are some examples.
Jackie?
So, alright, so pre-COVID, the, the. Organization sponsoring the trip would require certain vaccines based on, I'm guessing, the CDC guidelines, the. You know, depending on where you go, there'd be maybe.
Foreign travel, sure.
Foreign travel, yeah, so, okay, so that was, but, but we've never had domestic trips require vaccines, okay?
Beyond what's required for.
Cool.
School attendance.
So it definitely is, is a different scenario. But you've got students who are. Basically sharing a room. You know, and breathing all over each other online and, and what. In this case of Puerto Rico, you've got, if one of those students tests positive on the return testing. Then all four students become close contacts. And that affects them and another adult.
You could require vaccinated students to. Room together and non-vaccinated if they're, if you don't require the vaccine.
But then you're segregating kids. So what if one child on that trip is not vaccinated? They're gonna have to be in their own room?
Yep.
Yeah, see, I don't.
Well, that's not ideal.
Well, I don't, I don't even think it's fair.
Well, I. I like to think that it's fair. That if someone presents a greater risk to others, that, that maybe their. Accommodations would have to be different in order to protect all the others. I mean, essentially. In that scenario, you're saying we would have to treat that person. Exactly the same as people who are not presenting a risk to others, or at least are presenting a much diminished risk.
We, not only that, that student is at higher risk, so.
Right.
But then we would have to have the exemptions, you know, the medical exemptions, the religious exemptions, I would assume that. We do for any vaccine, how? Who makes that determination whether? How would we manage that?
Wouldn't it be the same guidelines as? If they had the exemption for school, counting towards that, whether.
So you're, are you saying if a student has a medical or religious exemption, they are not required to get it for travel?
Is there a religious exemption for a COVID vaccine?
Yes, any vaccine.
Well, there, there is, but it, it, I think it's a case by case basis. You can't, you can't just say, I have. What, very interesting kind of movement on that whole issue. Essentially what most companies are doing that are making vaccines a job requirement. They're offering religious exemptions, but only if the person can essentially demonstrate that they have always. Sought religious exemptions. So if they've been vaccinated against anything in the past. That involved the same cell lines, which is the issue, of course, with most religious exemptions. They're found not eligible and many very large organizations are not granting any religious organizations. Because there is no major religion that. Does not support vaccines. Even the Catholic Church, where the whole cell line issue is often raised. The Pope has strongly encouraged that everyone get vaccinated and says that it's not a, a conflict with religion, so. I don't know how the vaccines are decided, but. I mean, the religious exemptions are, are decided, but my understanding is that more and more. They're not really considered in most cases particularly valid. People can't just say it's against my religion. Because it almost certainly is not against their religion.
Well, it's, it is a little bit different when it's a public health concern. Pandemic versus. Other vaccinations.
Well, that's true.
But also. Possibly because we are a test and stay school, if the, if one of the. Chaperones or the, the staff, really it would need to be the staff advisor. Were willing to have the training to administer the binax now, we certainly could supply them with. Antigen tests to take with them, if that.
Problem. I mean, the kids are gonna have to be tested to come back probably anyway.
Well, you're talking about when they're there, right? Like having a daily test perhaps?
Right. Like a test, which is daily.
Right, and, right. So if someone tests positive. And they're not vaccinated. Then they do have to quarantine, correct?
Correct.
So. So what happens to the, to that child? In Puerto Rico, they have to quarantine then, or?
Yeah, there's usually provision for, with each vendor where there's a nominal fee for the room. And the, the boarding, the food for the, for the duration, they have an adult stay with them. I, I'm pretty sure. Evelyn described that for the Greece trip, actually. Yeah.
I think she was referring to when children became ill.
Something like that. It's the same idea.
Well, it is the same idea, but now that I'm thinking about it. If someone tests positive on the fourth day. They can't come back to the United States.
Correct.
I mean.
They have to stay and adult needs.
Right?
True of a vaccinated student as well. If they, if they're positive.
Right, right. What I don't know, I mean, and, and is, you know, whether this would. Frankly, I would be very much in favor of making it a requirement. What I don't know is if it would pass legal muster. I feel as though it should because this is a special opportunity. It's not as though we would be preventing children from. Attending school or attending school or being provided with education, an education. That's not something that would happen, but this is a special opportunity, but we are kind of responsible for ensuring their. Health, safety, well-being. So. I, I just, it's very difficult to imagine that it would be entirely safe. For these youngsters to be traveling, being in airports, traveling, going to a destination. And as Michelle has referenced several times, sleeping without masks, eating without masks. With, without being vaccinated. But I don't, as I said, I don't even know whether there has, there hasn't really been any opportunity to check with our attorney, right? To see if this, if we could mandate vaccines for a particular category of students.
Hasn't responded yet.
I mean, I think part of it, Caroline, to your point, and I was thinking this earlier, is, is this is not. Like, we can't mandate it for them to come to school, but we do have a percentage. That we need to meet for masks to come off, but this, a trip is a choice. It's not.
Michelle, actually, that's not true. We could mandate a vaccine. We just haven't chosen to do that yet. Yes, it turns out that school committees, well, it appears that school committees would have that authority. I think right now everyone's kind of. Trying to wait and see.
Well, and then if it's true, then I think that that actually works in our favor for mandating it for an overnight trip.
Except that if we, the distinction to me is if we mandated, I mean, and I know that this isn't something we're really discussing now, but. The districts that mandated vaccines, they mandated for all students. It's not a subgroup of students, so I don't, I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
But I think that's where it's, it's a choice to choose to go on this trip.
Yeah, it's not a requirement for their. Not a graduation requirement. It's not, you know, something that is. Attending school is mandated, or at least, you know, receiving educational services is mandated.
I think, right, to Caroline's point, you know, anyone could test positive. Vaccinated or unvaccinated, but I just feel like we have gone above and beyond for the last two years. To everything possible to ensure the health and safety of everyone, the students and the staff. And to not take that same precautions on, on trips, just. I don't know, it doesn't sit right with me. I just feel like. That's kind of just been the way we've been operating on their behalf.
Well, what, so what do folks think of? I'm thinking along the lines of, so the concerns are. As you two have both noted, there's the air travel, not, not being in the plane itself, as mentioned, that's actually very safe due to. How, how planes work, but, you know, the, the airport, the transport, you know, to and from and getting to the destination and then the. Rooming together are, are the two areas of concern, so I, I. I'm feeling like I would be comfortable saying that for, for trips that involve, you know, air travel and hotel stay. That we would require vaccination. And then I, I think where we have a little bit more of a gray area would be if there were a student organization. That had the opportunity to participate in something that they've, you know, something that they've earned or worked towards or. You know, if there are any type of interstate. You know, travel opportunities that are more closely related to school versus a, a completely optional trip. For those cases, would we have to look at? A more nuance in terms of, you know, say you had a student who was part of a team or a group. It was within driving distance, could they be transported separately and, you know, stay separately? To ensure the safety of that student and of everybody else? Would we want to consider something, you know, I'm picturing what if there's something, you know, that's in New England or. You know, the Northeast where you could easily drive there, you know, and, and participate in the activity and then, but not be part of the overnight. Or transportation with the rest, with the rest of the group. I don't know if we would wanna kind of go down that path. Or, or not. And just keep it more of a. Kind of cut and dried. Any thoughts?
It's really complicated. I think that, you know, there is a lot of nuance involved in the situations you describe. But maybe we need to just be up for that. I mean, you know, obviously there's far less risk for a student being driven to a tournament. Participating in a tournament, in the tournament and coming home. There's some risk to being in the tournament, of course, there's always going to be some risk. So what we're trying to do, I think, is just keep risks as low as they can realistically be. Under the circumstances of the given activity. So. I, I think maybe we have to go down that road and address various scenarios. I mean, there will be clusters of types of trips that we can probably. You know, I'm, I'm assuming we would not have to consider every single trip, every single tournament or whatever, that we can find a way to have categories. That have. Clear guidelines or, well, mandates really. So I was listening to a program earlier that was saying that they wish that. The vaccines had just been called job requirements all along instead of mandates, because somehow. A lot of people in our country just seem. To be set off by the word mandate, but, you know. So, we have so many job requirements for every job and people don't say, oh, you can't make me, you know. Have a degree. That doesn't seem reasonable. Okay, that's different. It, you know, having a shot is different, but still, it's a job requirement. And I think if we could make this a requirement for certain activities that. As Michelle said, are optional, they're not, you know, they're not. Necessary for graduation or for. To have a comprehensive educational program. I mean, it's an enrichment program, essentially what we're talking about. It's also. And it's a wonderful learning experience and it's part of the educational program, but it's not necessary to complete the educational program.
Yeah, and I just think where, you know, I know, I know Puerto Rico's technically considered domestic, but it's not land. You know what I mean? It's not like, it's not like in an emergency or if there was a child who, you know, who did get sick and, you know, their, their parent could just. Take a long road trip, go get them and retrieve them and come home safely, right? You're definitely dealing with quarantine, you have to get on a plane. There, there's just a, a lot there that to me feels very different from, you know, if we're talking about a trip again, that's, you know. A few hours of a drive away.
But you're still talking about hotel stays for overnight trips.
Yeah, but in those, again, I'm think, I'm imagining. And I know, I know we don't have any, you know, we don't have any that have been requested, but I could imagine a request coming through for something. That, that did involve a hotel stay and again, if you maybe had a student who could. You know, stay in their own room. If they, if they wanted to participate in the event. But, but not be, you know, sleeping unmasked in a room with other students. As an alternate.
How do we make that into a? General policy, because we can't. I, I think it has to be a little more across the bo-. I mean, I think there can be exceptions, but I, I don't think we can be every single. Every single trip, every single sporting event, every single tournament, every single. Competition that we have to sit down and then consider it again, because it could start to seem kind of ar- not arbitrary, but I just, I'm concerned about. Not having something a little more consistent, you know what I mean?
Yep.
We do, however, list what we call guidelines for lots of different scenarios for students. And that doesn't seem as complicated as it might at first, I mean, to me, as I think about it. So you would just say that for trips that involve overnights. Those that are not vaccinated would have the following requirements in order to protect themselves and others. I think that was a very reasonable, you know, that if the student really wants to participate in the tournament, they can be in their own room. But not presenting that continual. Potential, you know, exposure to other students. I don't know, it may just, I mean, obviously what we have in front of us is a trip that needs to either be approved or not and needs to have. Requirements or not that we, that we would come up with.
Times in the past that the music department has taken a train to New York City. Technically, that's only a couple hours away.
Trains are way worse than planes.
But it's public transportation, so that's where you get into all the, the. Endless scenario.
Well, that's, you know. Maybe we need to be brave and sit down and talk about some of these scenarios. I mean, trains are much worse than planes. I mean, if you read any of the information about travel and, you know, what's, it's, I guess, trains and buses are high-risk travel. So that's a good point. I mean, we can't just say, well, they're not getting on an airplane. So they'll be fine, because it's certainly not true.
Yep.
It really is complicated. I don't want to just throw out my, throw, throw up my hands, though. I wanna, I wanna do what's best for the kids.
Nancy?
Thank you. After the meeting the other night, when we were, well, during the meeting, when we were talking about going to Puerto Rico. I just feel like a trip that's out of the country. The kids should be vaccinated and if they want to go on the trip, then get vaccinated. Just, I, I don't see. How that can be, well, I can see it would be a problem for some people, but. Just being vaccinated, going away. Again, you're talking about some other things, maybe DECA or like a music trip or, you know, the sports things. I agree with Michelle that if you're gonna be staying in a hotel with other kids, then. I don't know, I think you should be vaccinated and that should be part of the, the requirement, as Caroline said, for going on a trip. If you want to do it, I mean, we're, we're in a spot now, this, you know, how many months in a year and something. Like, that we need to be careful of each other. Nobody wants to get this disease, that's for sure. And I think that the, the chaperones and the students. Should kind of fall in and say, yeah, we're gonna all be vaccinated.
I know this is only one example, but after our meeting last time, I received a, a message from. A, a parent who just asked me if we had approved the trip. Her, her son is slated to go. And I explained that it had been delayed because we wanted to have a discussion about vaccine requirements. And she said, basically, thank goodness. I mean, I think that's. She said, I trust the school committee to keep our kids safe and, and I, she said, I, I think she didn't really even realize that that wasn't the requirement. Because her child is already vaccinated. I think that, I suspect that most of the parents who are, you know, probably. Using precious dollars to make it possible for their children to participate in this wonderful activity. I would suspect that most of them would also be parents who would be, you know, very concerned about their children being as safe as possible. And would likely have their kids vexed, vaccinated. I, I mean, obviously, we don't know yet exactly who's participating. We don't know what their vaccination status is. But, you know, one would hope that. They don't, it would really be like a group norm for a trip like this, that the parents would. Ensure that their kids were vaccinated. Can we, could we? Vote on. This as a requirement for trips, overnight trips. And honestly, overnight trips kind of covers it. I mean, it doesn't even have to be foreign, domestic. I mean, obviously Puerto Rico is domestic and that's one of the sort of technicalities that we're struggling with here. But if we just made it overnight trips, but obviously we would make it contingent on just making sure that we. That the vote was worded correctly or whatever by our attorney. You know, we might have to, to revisit it if, if for some reason our attorney were to object to the wording of the vote. Or even the actual vote in some way. Based on some sort of obscure legal finding, obviously since. Darn it, I really should have gone to law school, but epidemiology first and then law school. But epidemiology first and then law school, okay. Um, but anyway, what do we think about having it as a requirement for overnight trips? Voting on it, but making the vote, making sort of the implementation of the vote um, contingent on the attorney um, being comfortable with the, with the vote. And, no, that's basically it. Thoughts?
I'm thinking. Well, could we make the vote conti- the contingency for overnight trips? And then, if we need to change it back, change it back? Or?
That's, that's, that's actually kind of the same thing.
Oh, it is, but then it, it takes the, it's
No, I, I think it's a good idea. Yeah, I, I, by the same thing, I meant it would serve the same purpose. Yeah. Would serve the same purpose is what I meant. Yeah.
Because we can always revisit policies or revisit.
Well, it is a requirement, and if for some reason the attorney doesn't support the requirement, you know, if when you're removing a, a requirement, it's not really um, putting people in a difficult position. I mean, people have to plan, they have to decide whether they're going on the trip. This would be in place unless our turn, they, if we were to vote to require vaccines for overnight trips, that would be in place unless our attorney were to have some objection either to the form of the vote or whatever. And then we, you're right, we'd have to immediately revisit it so that families could be informed in case there were families who were opting out of vaccines for their children. So yeah, I think we could just, as you said, do the vote and then we'd have to rescind it effectively if, if our attorney wasn't comfortable with it.
Are the rest of you com- comfortable with that?
So it would be to require vaccinations for participating in any overnight trip? Okay.
For now. I mean, it'd get to a point where we don't need that.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, obviously.
Hopefully, yeah. Um.
So just hypothetically, I just want to say, like, if they were to go to Rhode Island for an overnight trip, like, you know, for, for anything, they would have to be required to, to get vaccines.
Yep, they're still sleeping in a hotel.
I'm just putting it like in, you know, in little simplicity. Any overnight trips, regardless of location, even if they went out to Worcester.
I believe eating inside is now deemed the highest risk activity. So, yeah.
Would, in, in a case like that, right? So say, like, you, you know, Chrissy, you bring up, I, I remember going to um, Art Hall State, which was like, and it was in Worcester, right? So, yeah, I was like, whoo, two nights at some college dorm in Worcester. Um, would we, um, would this preclude us from entertaining allowing a student to go if they were not participating in the overnight portion? So say there were day activities and if the student were willing to self-transport to the, you know, two days of activities, the Saturday and Sunday activities, would we, would, do we anticipate that this would prevent them from being able to participate in those activities if they were willing to handle their own transportation and, and wouldn't be lodging with the group? Would that be any different than a school setting?
I don't think
The end of the day?
Be different than a date, field trip.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, personally, I can't, I would be okay with that. That would be just like if they went to the zoo for the day.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever.
Yeah, so it's, it wouldn't be the trip itself that the student was participating in that would, would require the vaccine. It would be the overnight. So, so you'd, so essentially, the requirement would be of the student, not of the trip, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Or not of the activity with. Yeah, that was a good distinction, because you don't, you know, if, if youngsters can still participate in the activity, um, it wouldn't seem fair if they could provide their own transportation back and forth that we wouldn't allow them because they weren't vaccinated. I mean, obviously, it'd be ideal if they were vaccinated, but yeah, I think it's the overnight and uh, yeah, that's the main issue.
Do you think Nancy and Jackie? You good with that?
Yeah, I was just trying to put something on in words, like, students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored overnight activity must be vaccinated. I don't know if that's simple enough or too simple or
Maybe overnight, overnight travel?
Any overnight activity or tr- travel instead of
I would say, I would say travel, yeah. I'm thinking, I, I, I know we're not doing, you know, I haven't, we haven't had Safe Grad Night or anything like that, but you know, we would, there are, there is an overnight
In the school.
Activity that's in the school.
It's not.
That's a whole different
Right, right, but it's an overnight activity.
Right, right. Is overnight travel?
Yeah.
Well, that overnight travel almost sounds to me like they're taking a train overnight. I mean, you know what I mean? It's like they're traveling overnight. So you've got to kind of find a way to
Any school-sponsored trip that requires overnight stay.
Okay.
There you go.
Nope.
So Nancy, read the whole thing again. It sounded good.
Sure, sure. Students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored trip that requires overnight stay requires an overnight stay shall be vaccinated. Want me to read it again? I kind of messed up.
Vaccinated again.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you're like, I have Should it be must be instead of shall be?
Must be?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me read it again. Students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored trip that requires an overnight stay must be vaccinated against COVID nineteen.
Okay, do we want to say fully vaccinated and define what that means?
Sure.
Yes.
Fully.
Yeah, we should. So that people can't just say they're immunized.
So, okay, must be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen. And then what would you add, Jen?
Um, uh,
Two weeks after the final dose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All right.
Full, full vacci- full vaccination is achieved two weeks following.
Prior to.
Or could you just say fully vaccinated according to CDC definitions?
Yeah, okay. All right, I like that. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, good. All right. So let me, let me read it again, please. Students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored trip that requires an overnight stay must be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen. Fully vaccinated me, um, no, so meaning fully vaccinated accord- no.
As defined by CDC.
To the CDC guidelines?
Must be fully vaccinated as defined by the CDC.
Right.
As according to the CDC guidelines. Okay. I get it.
Nancy, did you say students and sponsors?
Students and chaperones.
Chaperones, okay. Um, are, so the teachers are, that are going are also chaperones. I mean, they're they're teachers.
I think
Yeah, it covers everybody. So if you have parents, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Good. I like it.
Do you want me to make a motion, Michelle?
Is everyone comfortable with moving on to a motion?
Good?
Yep.
Put my legalese to you. So, okay, ready? I make a motion. Um, oh, before I do, do we need to say the Eastern School Committee or just, we just do it and it goes in as a policy?
Wait one minute. Just make sure I promised um, that if there were questions, they could be asked before. I only see one person who might ask a question. Let's just give it one second.
Yeah, no problem.
You have a public comment, um, before we take a vote now would be the time to put it in the chat.
Well, this is not actually a policy, right? Because we have to have two readings for a policy. So it's simply just a requirement.
Mm-hmm, it's a requirement in the guidelines.
Okay. All right. So, but what I'm asking, should I start with the Eastern School Committee votes that students are can I just say what I said before? Do I have to preface with anything?
Just say the
I think you can just make a motion, but you did.
Okay.
All right. I, I don't think that person has a question.
Okay. I make the motion that students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored trip that requires an overnight stay must be vaccinated against COVID nineteen. Does the students and chaperones
Vaccinated, yeah.
Must be fully vaccinated as accord- according to the CDC guidelines. I know I messed that up a little bit.
As, as, as some
As defined.
Yeah. Fully vaccinated as defined by CDC. Must be fully vaccinated as defined by the CDC. Yeah.
Okay. So do you want me to read it one more time? I make, I make a motion that students and chaperones participating in any school-sponsored trip that requires an overnight stay must be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen.
As defined by the CDC.
So that, I'm trying to make two sentences. I'm gonna make one. A- as defined by the CDC requirements. Is that right?
CDC, just CDC. As defined by the CDC.
Period.
Okay.
Are we good with that? All right, do have a second?
Our second?
Can I just, can I ask a question before you, you decide on that? I'm sorry. Is there, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Is there going to be a chance that the CDC changes their different definition of vaccination, fully vaccinated, to include the booster shot?
Oh dear.
Well, you know what, though? This covers that. It's just fully vaccinated as defined by the CDC. So whatever the CDC at that moment
If it changes, then that's what the policy becomes to. Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good point. I, I had to think about it. Yeah.
Okay. So Jen seconded it.
Mm-hmm.
So roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yeah. Star, yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. So before we um, adjourn, the next meeting is December
I'm sorry. You need to vote on the Puerto Rico trip.
Oh, I thought that was, is that on the agenda?
I thought we were going on the ninth for that.
Is that on the agenda? I'm sorry if I didn't see that. I, I thought we were gonna vote it for, vote on it on the ninth.
So did I.
Wasn't this supposed to be as, I honestly didn't look. I thought this was just a sole agenda item.
They needed an answer by the twenty-fourth.
Right.
I know. Can we?
Well, no, they, they, they need deposits in by the twenty-fourth. Let me look at my notes.
Yeah, it's not on there. So unfortunately, you can't vote on it.
I thought we were voting on the ninth.
Yeah, that'll, that gives them less
Can I, can I ask a question about the ninth? I noticed we have a meeting the ninth and then we have one the sixteenth. We have two weeks in a row. We have that much stuff to talk about? It's fine. I just ask it. That's all. Two in a row there. It's fine.
I think we'd, if we're one of them, we would get rid of the sixteenth, because I think we need to give the trip enough notice.
Definitely the ninth would be the next. Yeah. And if we, I, I'm just gonna put it out there that if we don't need the sixteen, that maybe we could postpone it on the ninth. You know what I mean? I don't know. It depends on what's coming up on the agenda.
I think we can talk about it on the ninth. We've, we've been known to at one meeting, just like, cancel the next meeting because there wasn't enough to talk about. Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Cabal, do you want to just double check with the, with the organizers for the Puerto Rico trip and see if the ninth gives them enough time? And if not, maybe
No, they did tell us that it's definitely tight, but
Yeah.
we don't have a choice now, so.
Okay, do we want it? Uh, do you want to just try to schedule a meeting just to vote on that and take ten minutes? I, I don't know what you guys think of that. Maybe next week. Um, I don't want to be respectful of everybody's time, but also appreciate that planning a trip that's this expensive and where they need to get deposits in is uh, you know, the more time families have, the better, especially around the holidays.
Well, as you said, it would take ten minutes. I mean, it's not
Probably even take that.
Yeah.
Take me longer to read this. All right, so what day? Let's look at a calendar. So giving.
The soonest it could be, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, um, would be the twenty-ninth.
I, I don't know if the town is open tomorrow.
They're, they're half day tomorrow, I believe. Yes, I'm pretty sure they're half day tomorrow.
If I can get an agenda to them tomorrow, we should be able to have it. I don't know if they're, are they open on Friday?
Well, what about Lynn? It's not five o'clock yet. Is five o'clock the deadline?
No, it's forty-eight hours.
No, I, right, so I'm just saying if you were to do it today.
Yeah, they're half day tomorrow and they're not open on Friday.
Are they open at five o'clock now, though? What time do they
No, wait. I think, don't they close at four thirty on?
No, but I think if, if you, if you got it into them tomorrow morning, though, that's more than forty-eight hours in advance, even including Thursday, you know, Thursday off and Saturday and Sunday, that's still forty-eight hours to Monday morning.
Friday also is off. They're off on Friday, the town.
But does that count as?
Are they off Wednesday?
They're off ha- they have half day Wednesday and they're off Thursday and Friday.
Forty-eight business days, right? Forty-eight hours, business hours. So even if they're closed Friday, it still counts as our forty-eight hours. We could just do it on Monday.
Even though it's, okay, so yeah, how are they, how are we defining business days? Is it when town hall is open?
It's not our, it's not us that define it.
No, when our town hall is open, I don't think.
Yeah, it's, it's the open meeting law definition.
Yeah, no, I, okay, so, so Friday would count then.
It's not, yeah, it's not a ho- Friday is a holiday.
Right, right, you're right. No, that's a good point.
So in order, not to interrupt, but they send, um, whenever there's a holiday, they send information. In order to have a meeting on Monday, the twenty-ninth, I would have to get a, um, agenda to them before twelve-thirty tomorrow. So as long as I get the agenda to them first thing in the morning, it should be fine. But Monday, twenty-ninth, if that's the day you're looking at.
Yeah, I have to quickly check my calendar in the other room.
It, it only has to be three of us, right? We only need a quorum to vote. So if all of us can't make it, it's, you know, as long as we're three.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure I can anyway. Yeah, but that's a good point. Only needs three people. So what time?
I can do four. Can we do four again?
Okay.
The majority?
Yep.
So Monday, the twenty-ninth. It's just the, similar to today minus a public comment and just vote the trip.
Correct. That's the only agenda item. Yeah.
Right, and if it's a workshop, we don't really even have to, you're right, don't even have to put public comment in there.
All right, so now our next meeting is the twenty-nineth or the one after that would be the ninth. Okay. Um, everyone good? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
O'Neil, so move.
Second?
Star second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes. DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yeah. Star, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Everyone have a wonderful holiday.
Bye, everybody.